Well, welcome everyone. Sorry for the delay. My name is John Aishen. I'm the Executive Director of Rochester A Builders and I would like to welcome you to our third town hall with candidates for Ward 4 with City of Rochester. We do have the ability to ask questions from the audience. That's there's a question you can just type it right in. I will be watching that as we get started. I'd like to thank the candidates for attending. We'd like to keep our members informed as much as we can. And this is one way we can do that. So thank you for your time. I know you are busy out there campaigning and thank you for running. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick Dole and Eric Brownlow to moderate.
Good afternoon, Ward 4 candidates. We're going to kick off our virtual candidate forum today by giving you an opportunity to introduce yourself as a candidate to the Ward 4 constituents and based upon how your faces are oriented on my screen with go to meeting webinar. Katrina, why don't you take the lead?
All right. Well, my name is Katrina Pullum. I'm born and raised just outside of town here. Been here my whole life. I'm a small business owner in town. My husband and I own Aaron Sandy Trampoline Park and just recently Do North Coffee Company. I'm a wife, a mom, stepmom of all boys. I'm kind of in a unique position today because it's my generation that's getting out, starting a lot of these new businesses. They're the builders in town. The ones taking over the family businesses and the ones running your own trades businesses in the construction industry. So I have a lot of people to lean on, a lot of support and guidance when it comes to some of the tough questions and concerns in our city. I'm running because I see a city that is in dire need for change. We are supposed to be going forward and we're not. The last four months have, sorry, have brought to light so many shortfalls, issues and problems within our community and are simply stalling our ability to be thriving and affordable and inclusive community. The restrictions and lack of support for the small businesses in our community are huge issues. And as a city, what I see are so many functioning and acting like there's no issues or care for one business survives or doesn't. It's disheartening to watch businesses after business closed. We had eight now in the last week and a half downtown and no support. I know the city has the funds right now. We're starting to see a couple of programs come out, but they're very restricted and they come with only certain limitations and only certain businesses are allowed to get them. So I'm watching developers being pushed out of town, builders being pushed out of town. And I think we need to stop, refocus, reimagine and create a new path forward. I hope that I can earn everybody's respect and trust and I think I'm the right person to move the city forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Katrina. Kelly Ray?
Yeah, hi, everybody. Thank you for holding the forum and thanks for everybody listening. It's been a real honor to be able to run for city council. I, Mark Builderback was my mentor for the last year as I was completing my graduate work. And I've owned my own small business for 23 years. I'm an independent landscape contractor and I come from a long line of contractors. My grandfather was responsible for building several beautiful homes in the close in northeast neighborhood, just northeast of Jefferson School, and he built several of those homes with his own two hands and a couple of uncles that are home builders and not a carpenter, but I love plants. So I went into landscape design, which I love. That's why I'm dressed like this today because trying to beat the rain that's coming to get a project done. And so, leading Eastside Neighborhood Association has been really a joy. I love to serve people. And over the course of the last year and a half, since I had made this a goal to run for city council if Mark Builderback was not going to continue his run. He's been learning all I can, sitting in on a lot of the city council meetings, whether it's virtually or in person. And I really enjoy the legislative process that we have here in town. I think we need change. I think the voice of the people needs to be carried forward, carried forward far more often than it is. Our active voices need to be heard in a proactive fashion. And as a mom, I want to see a bright future for all of the, all of the younger people that are in this community. I don't want to become a brain drain. I want people to stay here. We have a really, really wonderful city that's caught in an unfortunate economic situation. You know, we're all experiencing that across the country and across the world. So we're in uncharted territory economically. And I think if we all work together, we're going to be able to put some things in place that will buoy our city and buoy us all down the road. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly Ray. And PJ, you are up.
Awesome. Thanks, Rick. First and foremost, you guys, thanks for putting this on. This is great that we can do this. I'm PJ Hawkins and I love Rochester. I live with my wife, Callie, and our two kids in Slatterly Park. We've called Rochester our home for over 15 years. And I'm running for Ward 4 because I want to go to work for my neighborhood. I want to give them my unique set of skills and experience, knowledge and passion and really be that leader and voice for all Ward 4 residents. My experience as a leader dates back to the early 90s. I started my first business when I was eight. And I also dreamed of running for office in 2020. And so in those 27 years that have followed, I've continued to be a positive and collaborative leader that has navigated multiple businesses and nonprofits through multiple tough times and tough decisions. You know, I look back at what that experience has taught me. First and foremost, it's taught me how to be a hard worker and always power through. And also how to be a fast learner and someone who continues to move things forward. So I want to work together for all Ward 4 residents and help navigate through these challenging and unprecedented times we're facing. I'm here to move this city forward for you. Thanks.
Thank you, PJ. And with that, I will turn it over to Eric Brownlow for our first candidate question. Mr. Brownlow?
Yes, welcome candidates and thank you for joining us today. We will start and end with all things housing. Rochester is facing a severe housing shortage in all segments of the market. What do you believe are the best steps for the city to take to address this issue? Do you believe the city should play an active role in addressing the community's housing shortage in broader sense? And please explain. We'll start with Kelly Ray.
Thanks, Eric. So yes, I do believe that the city needs to play a more active role in addressing the community. But we all need to, we all need to step up as well. We need to update the Unified Development Code. We need to reduce permit fees significantly. We need to tighten the timelines from submission to project implementation. We need to change reporting dates, make sure that, you know, there's accountability for when reports are due. I'm not sure how we're going to incentivize homeowners at this time when we're in such, you know, an economic, a real economic conundrum here. But I know we're going to pull out of it. We've got a, we've got a sound tax base here with a thriving business economy. So I'm hoping that we're going to be able to incentivize home purchasing and more builders. We also need to work with our infill a lot more and do large scale urban design. I think large scale urban design is going to meet the need for housing on a much better level than some of the R2X type, you know, heights restrictive 40 unit, 40 unit buildings that are sort of being suggested, at least in my ward. And we need to develop our necessary infrastructure so that those buildings can be, can be created to help.
All right, thank you. And at any time, if you need either of us to repeat the question, just ask. PJ, let's go to you.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I agree with Kelly that the city should have, you know, a role in helping with the housing shortages. But I think it's from the standpoint of ensuring that we have affordable housing options along with those paths to ownership. Housing shortages contribute to the lack of affordable housing options just by the simple supply and demand principles. You know, I'm hearing here in Slatterly Park, houses that were going for 165,000 just, you know, two, three years ago are now pushing 190, 200,000 just by the lack of supply. That same $165,000 house just nine years ago was 115,000 and something that an entry level homeowner could afford to get into. When I looked this morning in preparation for this discussion, there are zero single family homes available for sale under 120,000 right now. There are five condos, townhome apartment type things that are available under 120,000, but those are two bedroom, one bath, 900 square foot, you know, units. So we definitely as a city need to work harder on that. I think infill development, growing upward is great. But we also need to look at the challenges that brings for that path to ownership. So we need to look at everything and nothing can be off the table when we're looking at lowering the cost, lowering the risk of development. If we truly want to address the housing shortages we're facing. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And Katrina?
So yes, I agree with both on the fact that the city does need to play an active role. And because of that, the reason why I think the city needs to play an active role is is more because we're running people out of town. I have really good friends with three different builders in town. I grew up with them and have been speaking and asking, kind of leaning on one of our bigger developers in town for a lot of answers to some of these tough questions that I personally don't deal with because I'm not a builder. So when I speak to them, the biggest thing that I hear, I mean, if we want more homes to be built in town, we need to look at first, the developers that are buying the land and the incredible fees that they're that are being thrown at them. I learned that 31% of the cost of a lot is currently simply due to just fees and regulations. That's a huge number. So if we can lower that, that only lowers the lot price. Lot prices right now in Rochester are 80,000 for the starting. I haven't seen very many under that and that's a small lot. So it starts there. And then by the time a builder comes in, buys that lot and then tries to build a decent sized home on it, we're in the 400,000, 300,000 dollar home before you even know it. So one, that's obviously making housing expensive. Two, the next thing is because the fees are so high, all of the builders are starting to build outside of town. Most people now can afford to work here, but they can't live here and they're building in Casson and Byron, Sturtville and not here. So some of that comes back down to our processes here as well and dealing with inspections and planning and zoning. And so I'm hearing a lot of things that need to possibly be looked at there as well to make it better and a little bit easier for us to build. I agree with both of them. Kelly and PJ both mentioned we need to look at home buying programs. I've always said that some of the smaller towns outside of here, they have CETA and they offer some amazing programs. Rochester could easily match some of those same programs. I agree, we're in a little bit of a weird time right now. But it's something we can definitely look at in the future and try to help everyone.
Thank you. The next question is really going to focus on infrastructure. And with DMC and the city focusing on investing millions of dollars in new infrastructure to develop the downtown core. We've heard from community members that areas outside the downtown core have kind of felt left out to a certain extent. And what do you think the city can do to support development outside the downtown core? And do you think it should? And why or why not? And I believe PJ, you are up first.
Great. Thanks, Rick. Yeah, I do think the city should be supportive of development in all areas within Rochester. And I think that the reason is because, you know, a good, healthy economy and a good, healthy city has balance. It can't be all in one area, one industry, one location. So I think multiple types of living and lifestyle communities for all kinds of people is what we need to have a healthy, healthy city. So, you know, I did a little research. This isn't my strongest, you know, area right now, but I'm, I'm learning as fast as I can. But, you know, looking at some of the areas outside of Rochester that incentivizes, you know, people to build here or build there in certain areas. Maybe there's some blighted areas in, outside of downtown that we can use tip funding for. Those are, those are some of the first initial ideas that I have, but as I learn more, I'll definitely formulate more on the policy and ways that we can encourage development, not just downtown, but also all areas of Rochester. Thanks.
Thank you, PJ. Katrina?
Yep, I agree with PJ. It's very important that we look not just downtown, but outside of downtown. For the last few years especially, it seems to be our only focus is downtown. And right now we're losing everything downtown. So we're kind of, you know, spinning our wheels, I think, a little bit right now with the way we've been running and choosing the projects that we're doing. Our developers, they are hitting roadblock after roadblock and it's, it's disheartening to hear some of the, the things that I'm, that I'm learning from them. Even trying to put up townhomes and they're trying to help with some of these shortages and do some of these things. And they're running into some of the strangest roadblocks with public works and different issues that shouldn't be issues. So yes, we definitely need to focus on it. Some of the other candidates running for president have mentioned even asking and repositioning DMC to be, to take care of and to look at more of a city as a whole. And using some of those funds to help develop our entire city, not just our downtown core, because we thrive and our downtown thrives because of our city, not, not just because of downtown. I don't know if that's an actual option or not, but it would be a great thing to look into and hopefully we can definitely start working outside of downtown.
Thank you, Katrina. And to provide a little context with that, I can let you know that the DMC legislation itself is not, it allows for a redrawing of boundaries without restriction associated with municipal boundary in general. Just for context for our viewers and those that'll get a chance to view this after the fact. Kelly Ray, you are up.
Thanks, Eric. So it's really understandable that we're working on downtown infrastructure. That is our oldest piece of infrastructure in the city. As new developments have popped up outside of the core, new infrastructure and developed lands have needed to be created for new living spaces, new business spaces. So it makes sense that we need to support our downtown core for the influx of people that are going to be using our infrastructure on a day to day basis to support Mayo Clinic. That being said, the residents need to come first in our city and I haven't been seeing that happen. DMC has done a phenomenal job with its first five years of its plan. However, that plan expires this year and I have not seen what's, what's coming ahead from 2020 to 2025. I would hope that they would be releasing that plan for Public View any, any day now instead of waiting until the later part of the year. But I think it's really important for us to understand, you know, our city is coming up on what, 161, 62 years old? So as we work through our really significant growth because of our economic situation in this city, we've gone, gone through several growth spurts. First, it was with IBM back in the seventies. They put a huge, huge amount of monies into our city through, through their tax base and their, their property out there Northwest. And then now that's coming in with Mayo as Mayo has, you know, eked out all other businesses and organizations in the state as being the largest employer. And we have them right here in, in our downtown. So larger scale development, I think is going to be really key. But I think one of the first places that needs to start is actually fairly close to downtown in the old, you were remembered as the Fullerton lot on that north end of the Fullerton Ampee Kmart lot. And I think if we can increase large scale development, which of course is going to be difficult in our economic, in our economic crises that we're having right now. But if we can increase that and then work with the R2X zoning, which I think is a good start. I don't like where it's sitting right now. But if we can work with those, those things, that's going to be a benefit to all of us. And then, you know, like I said, to recap that DMC five-year plan, it's time for them to look at what they can provide to the city instead of looking what the state and what the city can provide for them. And Mayo, of course, should come on board with that because anything that they do to support housing, to support infrastructure, to support quality of life for our families here in Rochester is going to benefit them with the influx of population that we're going to have in the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Moving on, we're going to touch on short-term rentals. And talking to the stakeholders in the short-term rental market, the vacancy rate has declined much quicker than that of the hotels in our city. This clearly demonstrates the visiting public's desire for this niche product. What are your views on short-term rentals? And we'll start with Katrina.
Yeah, I definitely think, you know, I've ran into needing, needing that exact same scenario probably three times in my life. Whenever you sell a home, there's always that weird gap in between where you need a place to live and before you can get into the next place. And also a lot of people who are just transitioning, who are coming here, I think for treatment for Mayo. Not everyone wants to stay in a hotel the entire time when you have a family. And maybe even somebody with an illness, you know, that might, especially right now, that could be higher risk wandering through the hotel. So I think short-term rentals are, are great. That's just me. I think that there is a need for them. I personally needed them two or three times in my life, just for random situations. And yeah, so I definitely think that it's something we need to look more into. I definitely agree that we do need them. And I don't see any issues beyond that.
All right, thank you. And PJ, your view of short-term rentals?
Yeah, I agree with Katrina there. I think it's hard to imagine that the medical tourism industry is going to bounce back like it was before COVID. So I think in the short term, we need to ensure that there's all kinds of options for accommodations and people going through transitional periods for places to stay. We need to understand, you know, human behavior is changing now. The, the need to feel safe and comfortable and be in confined space and away from others is a new part of our new reality. And I think short-term rentals fit that need very well. And as you guys are saying, the, the data proves that as well. So the only other thing I think is, you know, as a city, we're probably do of looking at, you know, getting those short-term rentals more on the books and having to find processes for ensuring safety across all types of accommodations here in Rochester. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And Kelly Ray?
Thanks. Short-term rentals are essential to our community. We have a phenomenally large medical and hospitality industry in this town. It's, it's what runs our town. A lot of our residents work for these industries and a lot of outside sleeper communities work for these industries as well. Short-term rentals can be utilized in so many ways. Our city could step up, apply CARES, CARES Act monies, budget monies to work with the unsheltered in our community. They could be utilized for, as we've talked about, visiting folks. But I think it's key to understand that VRBOs don't pay taxes like some of the other businesses do. And if we could capture that, that opportunity of income for the city, I think it would be helpful and can increase some of the incomes that our city could have in this, in this time when we're all struggling financially. And I think looking at and understanding that this is perhaps the way things are going to be going. It's not, it's not so much just a hotel or a motel. These are types of things that can supply a home base for people for weeks or a couple of months on end. If we can kind of shift our thinking to this new era that we're entering, we're going to be better off. That, that diversification of shelter is going to save our hospitality industry. When I look at businesses across the bar, across the board now, the ones that are highly specialized are the ones that are suffering most. And again, I'm going to commend our restaurateurs. They, they thought really out of the box. You take a restaurant that you eat inside, they shifted it to outside. They shifted their food to meal kits. They shifted their food to takeout and pickup only. They were able to take what they did and diversify it in a short amount of time to meet the needs of their business and those that they serve. And I think the highly specialized businesses that are not able to do that are going to be the ones that struggle. And our hospitality industry cannot afford to stay as specialized it is, as it is. So these short-term rentals are really essential to our economy. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, the next question somewhat dovetails with topics I believe all three of you brought up in the answer to our last question in that Rochester has been incredibly fortunate to have Mayo Clinic be the largest pole in the tent for decades and support economic growth in our community beyond any other community in the state of Minnesota, really. However, with that said, what do you think the city of Rochester could and should do to support other businesses that may not be directly related to the medical community? And I believe PJ, you are up first.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Yeah, at a high level, I don't think the city has done enough when it comes to the care of businesses outside of that, that medical industry. And my family business is a prime example of that. We had to move our factory that, you know, was growing, employed 20 to 50 people depending on the year, was making millions of buttons, you know, and selling 99% of our business came from outside the state and outside Rochester. Well, after two, three property tax increases over 15 years, we had to move that business out of Rochester because we couldn't compete in the world marketplace that we competed. So I think, you know, looking at when we moved out of Rochester, all the surrounding cities provided incentives, whether it's property tax, variances on our buildings. And we need to consider that as a state, the state of Minnesota taxes our businesses at a higher rate than other states. And if we want to spur new growth, we need to find ways to counter that. Thanks.
Thank you, PJ. Kelly Ray?
Thank you. I think it's really important that when, when we think about, can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Cliff Notes version, because I have a tendency to talk too much.
Yes, please, yeah.
What do you think the city could or should do to support businesses outside the medical community in general?
Yes, okay, that's the question I thought I was answering. Thanks. So yeah, the, the largest employer in the state has a responsibility to support its main community that works so hard for them. And they're not, they're not, they can't be just responsible for themselves. And I think Mayo does an incredible job of supporting its employees and supporting its visitors and supporting our downtown community. And they just put up $10 million to work toward racial justice over the next 10 years, a million dollars per year. So they, they do huge things for this community. But instead, look outside of what they can do and actually incentivize people to stay here. We don't give up and go elsewhere. Instead, we try and work with our legislation here in the city to alter policies to make it better to grow businesses here. By, by going elsewhere, we increase someone else's tax base. And it's, it's really difficult to understand the whole buy local piece if, if you're not a proponent of buy local or use local industry or incentivize local industry. But I, but I think that's the key. Sometimes I feel that Rochester's maybe gotten a little too big in those areas that, that we can't relate to. We're going outside of our community for so many things and we've still got a really, really lovely small town feel. We're an island in southeast Minnesota that offers so much to so many and we need, we need to keep it here. So if we can incentivize more local with, with our big money generators, I think we're going to be a lot better off.
Thank you. And Katrina?
All right. So does Mayo do enough to support small businesses? That's a correction question?
No, no, the question is really about, you know, what do you think the city could or should do to support businesses that are not necessarily tied to the provision of medical services?
Um, well, right now, a lot. They could be doing a lot. So I've been speaking about this since the minute that it was made public that the city received CARE Act funding. I am a small business owner. I'm an actual small business owner that is restricted and affected by COVID right now. My business is only allowed to operate at 25% capacity still today. It's frustrating. It's hard. Our businesses downtown are still at, all the restaurants are at 50% and it hasn't budged. And we have no idea when it's going to. So right now, a lot. There's a program that just got launched. That's only for people that hold licenses within Rochester. I just received that email and it was disheartening to see because once again, it was like, oh, there's grant funds released, but you have to hold a license with the city of Rochester to apply for it. All of us see that. There is 5 million, I believe, that is supposed to go to small businesses. Parts of it are going all across the board. Some people have heard of Rochester Ready. It's a program that Mayo Downtown Alliance, Ready and the city council and a bunch of other organizations have put together. Really to show that Rochester is in the fight and helping, you know, we're all clean, we're all wearing masks. We're doing what we can to welcome Mayo patients back is what it started as. And, and it's not a horrible concept. The chamber has done shop local first. I believe they're trying to run that again. Another thing that helps small businesses in our area. Um, it another thing that helps small businesses in our area. But right now, those CARE Act funds, they need to get to small businesses. That's the the first way. Um, I just learned we lost another business downtown yesterday. Um, Let Us Unite, um, just announced that they're closing. Um, and I actually walked down there to go visit um some friends and I was lost. I couldn't even get to their building and was doing circles um to try to figure out how to get down um Second Street. So yes, we need to desperately, our city needs to step up and help um across the board and not with restrictions. Not only people who have city licenses, not those that only follow Rochester, that have taken the Rochester Ready pledge. Um, it needs to somehow help everybody. I proposed to the county um and the city that they do a rent relief fund for businesses that are still affected um that are fifty percent um restricted or more, just to help pay rent. Um, because no one can pay rent right now when your business can only operate at half of its capacity or less. Um, so that's, that's a big thing that I've been trying to focus on and get the city to help small businesses with. But in a quick short answer, I could go on forever about what I think the city should do for small businesses because I'm one of them that needs help. Um, but yeah, there's um, there's definitely a lot that we can do and it just, it needs to happen sooner than later. Um, and not after we lose all these businesses in October.
Thank you, Katrina.
Oh, I have a question. May I ask a question?
Sure.
I I know this is, I'm going rogue here, it's something that I do. But to honor the conversationalistic uh kind of approach that you all wanted to take with this, Katrina, you just mentioned about the incentivizing of rents. I I think that's a phenomenal idea and I know that that has been done with Dooley's over the course of, I think, the last three months. I think they've only been paying twenty five percent of their rent since um, I believe, since uh COVID started. Is this something that's just being offered by the city to particular downtown businesses in the core? Or is this something having to do with um, you know, you have a retail space and I don't have a retail, you know, business. So I, we're different in the fact that we're small business owners that in that regard. But so can you help me to understand that a little bit better?
The city actually owns Dooley's building.
Right.
Dooley's rents from the city. So that's why the city um is able to give them a less rent. Yeah, so that that's why Dooley's was able to get that.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. EB, you are up.
All right, we will move to the, in my opinion, the the real whopper questions. Uh, the city has steadily increased the restrictions associated accessing TIF for development. Please describe your perspective generally on the use of TIF in as a development tool. And additionally, are you concerned the additional restrictions blunt the potential positive effect utilization of TIF funds can have on incentivizing development? And uh, we'll go back to Kelly Ray.
Awesome, thanks, Eric. So yes, yes, I think you're right. This is a whopper of a question. You labeled it really appropriately. Generally speaking, I think that TIF is a really functional development tool. However, um, we need to use TIF uh equitably across our city. And recently, we haven't, we haven't really seen that. It's been a funding mechanism used in most cases for hospitality or luxury, luxury price points versus like workforce and truly low income um housing. And this is not actually the case across broader Minnesota. Broader Minnesota is utilizes TIF in 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 a different way than we do here in Rochester. So I think, I think that's something really um specific to our community because we are so driven by medical and hospitality industries. So that that's a real key component that I think our listeners need to understand and we all need to kind of dive in and understand a little bit more about. Uh, so this this unequal balance has left the community with um little affordable housing and the community amenities in um several locations of the city. But also the added restrictions that have sort of come with the policy changes since nineteen eighty six, when when TIF was sort of significantly amended, um, it's it's making it much more difficult to incentivize certain developers. And that's unfortunate. So if we can, if we can expand the categories within TIF, um, additional buildings, I think, um, would be eligible for their funding mechanism. This this funding mechanism that's created specifically to incentivize development, um, eliminate light locations, that kind of thing. Um, so if we can further multi-use buildings that include, you know, maybe daycare centers, educational facilities or grocers, a perfect example of this would be the People's Food Co-op and the Metropolitan Marketplace located at First Avenue and Sixth Street Southwest here in Rochester. Um, that's a real prime example of what we can do throughout the city that's going to add amenities to the workforce, um, create a nice tax base and a profit for the developers. And um, if we can also change TIF to um not be scheduled or created for a forty to sixty percent AMI, when, if you think about it, those of us who have mortgages, um, financing, I haven't checked on it recently because I haven't bought a house in the last four years. But, you know, if we can get a mortgage for forty one percent of our income, why are we supplying housing at an affordable level for a forty to sixty percent of your income when we're not even allowed to take out financing for a home mortgage at greater than forty one or forty three percent of our income? So I think we need to back that budgeting down and have it be twenty to forty percent of AMI for a lot of the TIF building that we do. And I think that's gonna, we need to, we need to slam this, we need to get going on this building. We're we're ten to fifteen years behind to supply our incredible medical facility we hear, that we have here. And um, our workforce is struggling, they're coming from out of town uh and that kind of thing. So, yeah, I think TIF um needs to be altered significantly to benefit everyone, not just the developers, but those of us that um need housing, those of us that want to work closer to home, those of us that want to play in this beautiful city and live here. So, thank you, you're right, whopper of a question and I appreciate you asking it.
All right, thank you. And and Katrina, your views of TIF?
Um, so TIF financing, it was something that was kind of new to me. And so I've really dug deep into this and talked to a couple council members about what they have been doing with the with TIF and and what they see happening in the future with TIF. Um, one of the things that I learned is right now, um, our percentage of TIF is really low, actually, right now in our city. So and I agree with Kelly on everything that TIF is good. There's a lot that we can do with it. Um, the parameters around it, yes, I would love to see them loosened. Um, and we can be able to hopefully dig into more projects. I know they just recently and um, TIF has been used the most with hospitality. Um, and the city just um voted to actually no longer allow TIFs on hotels because they said that we've have enough hotels is kind of their thought right now. Um, I agree and I disagree. I mean, we have hotel tax, so in the end, we use TIF, but we do get funds. Um, we get revenue back because of hotel tax, so that's a great um thing for our city. But in the end, TIF is is meant to, and I would have loved to have known about it when I was doing my building because it would have been huge if I could have saved um some of this. So as a business owner, um, when you're, you know, looking at buildings and you're looking at even revitalizing some of it, the TIF funds could be huge in the sense that you could use them um in the same, in the same concept. Our housing shortage right now is huge. Um, and for developers and people trying to get in and build apartments and um even low income housing, this is a huge, huge, huge benefit to keep the pricing of the apartments low um with fees being so high from the beginning. If they can push things out um a few years and use some of the TIF funding, I think it would, it would help our city as a whole. So I agree with Kelly on trying to look at changing some of the policies and how we use TIF in our city and allowing it to be used more frequently and and um in different ways than maybe we've looked at traditionally in the past.
All right, thank you. And PJ, you're up.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. Uh, yeah, I agree both with Kelly and Katrina. Uh, generally, I think, I think TIF is great. Um, a lot of the projects that have been done with it, especially, you know, Flats on Fourth and Slatterly and the Co-op, I think are great. They were, they were awesome projects. I use them and enjoy seeing those almost on a daily basis. Um, but, you know, like Kelly Ray said, we we need to ensure that there's balance and there's a degree of thoughtfulness on when it is used. Uh, but, you know, I am definitely concerned about the additional restrictions that they're putting on TIF. You know, especially as we're coming through what is poised to be an economic, you know, crisis and impact that we're all going to go through. Uh, I think restrictions in any form of, you know, added policy um is is bad for positive growth and development. And we need to do what we can to to start rolling that back if that's a problem. Uh, and I think that's going to take a collaborative leadership approach to do that. Um, and it's something that, you know, I'm willing to sit and listen and learn and and kind of determine what's best for the city to continue the momentum we had before the pandemic and ensure that we can keep that rolling as we come out of it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, I received a question here from a member and I think it dovetails nicely with the conversation that we were all having earlier in that your ward is geographically diverse. You know, it covers part of downtown and a large, just residential, single-family community. If you are elected uh to your position, to the position everybody's chasing right now, how would you balance uh the competing development considerations between different portions of your ward? Would you have to? How would you go about it? And I believe, Katrina, you get to kick us off on this question.
Yeah, this was kind of our our last um question that we had with the Post Fullerton. It's almost to the t verbatim, that question.
Heated.
Yeah, they did. They did. Um,
It's okay, we'll answer it again.
Yeah, we will. I I, I mean, as I'm a, I live in this ward. Um, my business is in this ward. Um, I have friends downtown and people kind of, my dad lives in this ward on the other side of town. So I feel like we all can work together and I think that's the problem. Um, right now, we need to find ways as a, as business owners, as a community as a whole. We are incredibly diverse neighborhood. Um, my business is kind of in the heart of of the neighborhood too on, right on the south side. Oh, sorry. Let me just sit down. He came home. Um, so the the big thing is just finding ways to come together. I don't, I, there is so much that needs to be done on southeast Rochester and so much that can be done. Uh, we have so many empty, empty spots, um, the Kmart parking lot and the Ampee lot and the Fullerton lot. All of that is going to be a huge, um, it it could be a great opportunity for Rochester. It's it's almost, you know, I think it's altogether sixty acres or or more um of waterfront frontage. And the um Slatterly Park neighborhood and some of the other neighborhoods have been offering advice and they've done a great job um putting in their opinions on what should be done there. Um, that alone and what Slatterly Park Neighborhood Association has done to really change what's going to happen there is exactly how we work together as a community, how we help push our neighborhood and our ward forward. So.
Thank you, Katrina. Uh, PJ?
Awesome, thanks, Rick. Yeah, this one, uh, it was a little tough for me to answer this one for the PB, uh, just because they're, you know, haven't really felt there's been a clear example of, you know, when there has been conflicting things within the ward. Um, because I don't believe overarching type of leadership is the way to go with things. I think it's all on a case by case basis. Um, but at a high level, I think, you know, when there are expectations of different parts of the ward that conflict with each other, uh, it's that collaborative form of leadership, having open discussions, being honest and and transparent with people um and doing the best to educate and articulate uh the needs of other people and having empathy when you're going through those conversations so that, you know, we may all not agree on the same thing, but at least we can understand where everyone's coming from and have respect for that uh and and work together to move forward. And, you know, that's, that's just how I've always led businesses, nonprofits, you know, my family, everything has always been, let's, you know, hey, we're all not going to agree, but let's come together and just have an open conversation and uh go from there. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly Ray.
Thanks, Rick. So, yes, Ward Four is the most complex and diverse ward in the entire city. We have such uh economic diversity, we have historical diversity. There's a hundred and fifty years of incredible architecture close to the core. We've got the most beautiful cemetery. Uh, we have one of the first food trucks that started before the food truck ordinance was put into place here in town. Great sports, um, sports things, there's over ten languages spoken here. Um, we're just, we're just an incredible section of town. And um, the the premise of the question, assuming that there's conflict, is sort of frustrating to me because I I I see this diversity making us so strong, um, bringing all of our talents and all of our skill sets together to make this ward very, very rich culturally um and socially. So I I think for me, when you ask me what that means, um, I really care about the folks that are in this ward. And I've been, I've been serving the community and other other sections of our city, um, people that have sought my help for for quite a long time. And I believe in full transparency and active communication. Um, I intend to continue to listen to those that ask for my help, my neighbors. I um, I continue to do what I've been doing if I'm elected. So uh, I don't see any changes there. I'm a dedicated um person. Thankfully, my children are grown up now. I don't know that I could do this if I had younger kids, but um all of my children being adults now means that I can um, I can really use my type A energy to get to get a lot more done than I used to. And um, I I just think if we continue to step up our efforts, uh, our ward will really become the thriving section of Rochester that I've always seen it being. And um, it's my heart that sees this rich diversity of people and um the environments that are here and our economies will will work together and will will continue to to thrive and and move move towards thriving.
Excellent, thank you all. Uh, as we reach the end of our hour here, uh, I believe it's time to give you, all three of you, the opportunity to provide a touch of wrap up comments. Uh, if there was any question you didn't feel you had the opportunity to fully answer or touch on any additional topic related to building and development within the community of Rochester that you want to address now, uh, please feel free to do so. And uh, PJ, why don't you start us off?
Yeah, thanks, Rick. Uh, thanks, Eric, and thanks for everyone that's uh taking the time to be a part of this and tune in. Um, I'll admit, you know, building code and policy is not uh my strongest topic at this time. Uh, but I do understand it's very important. Um, and I want to have a good understanding and knowledge and I believe that your city council representation should. Um, but I'll tell you this, I'm a fast learner, uh, I'm a collaborative leader. Uh, and I've always been one to recruit and surround myself with people of different backgrounds, skill sets, knowledge. And so to me, this is one area, I feel I have a solid group of trusted friends and members and mentors that have experience and knowledge to share, but I also intend to grow that network and that knowledge. Uh, there was one question that you didn't touch on that I do want to make a point uh to to say because I took the time to prepare for this. Uh, the land development manual, switching over to the unified development code. Again, I'm not the strongest in it, but the one area that I think that I can help with the most, just with the knowledge that I have right now, when I looked ahead at what they had planned to do and be a part of their process in twenty twenty one and beyond, um, is the graphics and the illustrations to make it more digestible and understandable for the average person. Uh, because I don't understand the building code. So if I'm going to uh go through this process and if they have the ability through illustrations and graphical uh representations to have that code be understandable much more easier, uh, then it makes it easy for me to educate and articulate uh to Ward Four residents, um, what is going on and how that code works. I also believe that an easy to read and easy to understand and easy to explain, it helps promote opportunity for more people in the community to get involved, provide uh informed feedback and opinions. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Kelly Ray?
Thank you. Um, I'm a dedicated community leader and a lifelong resident of Rochester. I have been a small business owner for twenty three years and I personally put myself through college and graduate school while raising my family and moving through some of um the most difficult things that life can throw at you. Uh, my experience that speaks for itself. Uh, when Mark Bilderbach leaves, he's leaving big shoes to fill. He's done an excellent job with this ward and I'm thankful for the time that I spent with Mark, uh, having him as my mentor for one of my graduate courses and being able to spend the last year and a half working on um, working on being a good listener, working on understanding what the issues bring to play by by being in attendance at the city council meetings and observing what's going on and the trajectory that things are moving in. And I have, I have a valuable part to play in the future of Rochester. And I have, I have a valuable part to play in the future of Rochester and I want to be that fierce advocate for the residents in Ward Four as well as other areas of the city. We have a bright future. Our youth deserve an excellent community to grow up in as I had. And like, like I said at the end of the last question, it, it's my heart that sees the rich diversity of this community and what we can move forward. And it's why I listen and it's, it's what gives me the ability to get the things done that I'm asked to do and the ideas as an ideator for doing things. And I have a heart. I move forward with my heart. So thank you, everyone, for listening and thank you so much Rochester area builders and C Mar for bringing this forward, Rick and Eric. Thank you.
Thank you. And Katrina?
Um, so I just want to end by saying that I am a business owner. I'm on the ground right now. I fight, I'm fighting every day to get by. I am speaking to business owners daily. I have friends that are builders and developers in town. My family is all in construction or working at Mayo, basically. So I completely understand the issues on both sides happening right now. One of the things that I found the most interesting that someone had kind of explained to me and it really was, is eye-opening is to think back. So in 1883, a little bit of a history lesson, but in 1883, a tornado came through Rochester and it destroyed a third of our city. It's what actually started Mayo Clinic in St. Mary's. We had no hospital in Rochester at that time. And because of that tornado and because of that disaster, the sisters at St. Francis and the Mayo brothers came together, created what now is the most amazing hospital in the world. And I think we're in that same type of situation right now. We have a chance right now. Because of this crisis, it's allowed us to start relooking at a lot of the processes in our city. We're looking at how we can try to reimagine Rochester. We, we can look at our planning and zoning, how we function as a city, how we welcome our builders back, how we encourage development, how we find affordable housing and how we just as a city start finding new ways to work together and, and rebuild. We have a shortage of homes. Well, how do we do it? We start bringing our builders back to town because we've been pushing them out of town for so long. When I talk to them about the issues, I, I'm constantly hearing micromanaged, unorganized, excessive fees. Those are kind of the, the common factors that have pushed them out of town. So a lot of things that we need to look at as a city as we move forward. I believe that we're stronger together. I see no better time than right now to start working on changing how we function as a city. Respect, integrity, inclusive honesty, hard work and welcoming are the values that we need to focus on. And today, we need new, fresh ideas. The old ways of running our city are not working and they're not going to work going forward and coming out to get us out of this crisis that we're in, in the pandemic. I care about the future of our city immensely. I'm honest. I'm fair. I'm determined to fight for a better tomorrow. And I want to make sure that we are turning a new page and reimagining Rochester. And I'm ready to serve Ward Four. And as far as the land, the land manual goes that PJ had touched on too, that is an opportunity for us as a city to really do good and not go backwards. The Unified Development Code scares a lot of developers because the word unified. And we need to make sure that we're going in a good direction when we start looking at that and not backwards and putting more restrictions and scaring people even further out of town when we redo, redo or look into that. So it's a positive thing, I think, as long as it goes in the right direction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Don't forget, everybody, that cast your ballot on or before August 11th in the primary election. And we do want to wish the best of luck to all three candidates and hope or, and hoped that we'll be able to have continued discussions with you after the primary date and into your potential roles as the Ward Four candidate on the Rochester Common Council.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Hi, guys. You're good night.
Thank you.